Good evening, everyone. We'll get started in a few minutes here.
Sounds good. Could you make us a presenter? It's Community and Wellness, the first one, not Community and Wellness 2?
Sure.
If we want to share our screen, do we, can you just give us permission at the time, or do you want to give us permission ahead of time?
I'll make you a co-host. Hopefully that'll work. Yeah, that should work. If you want to test it out for the next couple of minutes and try to share your screen, feel free to do so.
Okay, I'm here when it does right now then. Something should happen there.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Great. I think we're all set then.
This is my mom, so she needs to do it.
I'll stick up the agenda if you guys are done. Rich, a question for you. Did you join from the link I sent in email or the Savvy Citizen?
The one I, the one that was out there in email kept asking me to register, to get in.
Yeah.
And then when I started to register, it kicked me out. I went back to one that I had saved, that I have saved to my calendar. We use month after month. And that's where I used to join.
Okay.
Yeah, the one that was in the email wasn't working right, for some reason.
Huh, okay. Maybe the other members are having a little trouble, so let me forward that. Let's just give it a few more minutes to just let everyone from the Planning Commission join.
Lydia, it's Doug. I think I got in, I tried, something populated on the calendar, and then didn't get in. But then that second email where you said you had recalled everything, that's the email I got in on.
Okay, so maybe.
I think that's how I got in. It wasn't. But I know there was one that I had to register and then nothing happened.
That's the same thought in my head, Doug.
Yeah.
But the one that was populating my calendar works just fine.
Okay. But I did populate the new one. There was one in there that anyways, but I did have to try two different things to get in.
Yeah, the hangup might be that our meetings had previously been at seven. And we changed them to six thirty, so maybe everybody's just running a little late because they're the, this is the first meeting, we're doing it earlier for the, and we'll, we'll be doing it all year, but this is the first time we're, we're meeting earlier.
I like the six thirty meeting.
Yeah, I think it works well for most people. It depends on bedtime sometimes for people with young kids.
I, I think the six thirty is good because it gives you time to get to work, but then you still have time with the family afterwards. Provided it's not a marathon meeting, but you know, usually hour, hour and a half, and you can still put the kids to bed and do that sort of thing.
Those are always the timeframes being worked, just doesn't always happen. Looks like we have Kirsten joining. Good evening. Just waiting on Colton and Eric.
Sorry, lost track of time.
Yeah, it's okay. I was telling everyone, this is the first meeting that's earlier, so it's not quite in our rhythms to hop on this early.
Yeah, it was still in my calendar from ages ago, still at seven. Six thirty it is for 2021.
Okay, we have Colton. So, in the interest of time, maybe what I'll do is just reorganize the agenda so that we don't do the reorganization until Eric's here, just so he can vote too. So, let's just get the meeting started at six thirty-five. We'll do a roll call and we can hop back to the reorg after. So Kirsten, see her here?
Uh, here.
Rich Kramer?
Here.
Colton Chandler?
Here.
And Lydia Herring's here. Eric Valcheff is not currently present but may join. I'll open it up for any citizen comments before we get started. Okay. With that, we'll move to the presentation by our citizen groups. I want to just give a brief little introduction. And then I'll pass things off. We did make sure that they'll, they'll be able to, that this group will be able to share their screen and present their ideas. But I want to jump in and just give a brief introduction and provide a brief overview for anyone who's not aware, and also especially for Doug since you weren't part of the October workshop. But the Planning Commission held a workshop in October twenty twenty to provide some context and history for the proposed get-go development on the school district ballfield property. This is at the corner of West Juven Street and Linden Avenue. And the basis of that proposed development is for a get-go gas station and convenience store as the anchor tenant. At that workshop, we gathered feedback from the community about the proposed design and use of the property. We also heard other ideas from the community on the use of that space. The Planning Commission then summarized the input received during the workshop for Crafton Council and the Carlington School District to consider during future decision-making. The Planning Commission acknowledges that final decisions about the property will also weigh factors like economics and market conditions for the property sale. But in the last couple of months, since that workshop, a group of citizens has prepared some additional ideas for the property that they'd like to present this evening. And information from this presentation will also be made available to both Council and the school district for consideration. And we're pleased to welcome engaged citizens to present their ideas in a public forum this evening. With that, I'll open it up to you, Greg and James. And I've stopped sharing, so you should be able to.
Okay, thank you very much for having us. I'm James. This is Greg, my neighbor. And we're going to be presenting to you guys. So once again, thank you for having us. During this time, if anything kind of gets rocky or if you can't hear us, I just speak up and we'll kind of change course just a bit. I assume all of you guys can see our presentation?
We can, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. So we view this as the Crafton Park extension, and we would like to see this, this land be used more as a community and a wellness complex as opposed to simply a gas station. So, to begin, we'd like to kind of talk about what our intentions are. We deeply disagree with the construction of another gas station. There are a number around Crafton. We don't feel that we need another one. We'd like to see that space be used in a way that better benefits Crafton. And so ultimately, we came up with two possibilities. One is maintaining it as a green space, or two, developing a community attraction. The goal here is that we want to see Crafton be used as a destination for people from Roslin Farms, Carnegie, Ingram, West End, Thorberg, Green Tree, Crafton Heights. We want people to be drawn to our community. We don't want to necessarily be another pit stop for gas and cheap beef jerky on their way to somewhere exciting or somewhere better. We want to be that destination. We want to be the, you know, the place to be. The proposal that was kind of given to us was the gas station, and so we included a picture of what that might look like. The features that we see, a gas station, and then possible features that were outlined to us, there'd be an apartment complex and a pond. The negative long-term effects, and this is kind of after some research, is that there would guarantee the increased levels of benzene. And this is a carcinogen, pardon me, affecting the nervous system, immune system, and respiratory tract. And that's something like according to multiple studies, they said a minimum of three hundred feet gap. But really, after you look at studies, they all recommend much more than that. We also see the likelihood for ground pollution in the form of spills and leaks, and then obvious light pollution coming from a gas station.
Another situation is that a gas station on the lot really ties that into a long-term commitment to that land for that type of a development. Gas stations last fifty, sixty years, and many of them are hard to remediate afterwards. So it's really, it's really a generational commitment. Once you put the gas station on the corner, it kind of locks that land and it truly becomes pretty much unusable for anything else unless you're going to dump a heck of a lot of money to it later on to remediate it.
So our proposal is going to look, or would look, something like this. It's important to keep in mind is that a lot of the pieces can be tweaked. But overall, it's leading to a more community kind of driven atmosphere here.
Yeah, so what we laid this out, we took the property lines and tried to use some of the existing, what was there existing to build around it. So, you know, starting off with the mini golf, you can see there in the bottom left, you know, we could maintain that as the mini golf and enhance it and make it, you know, put a little bit into it and make it an attraction there. We'd maintain the parking lot because the public comments were that this whole corner here is still being used heavily by Crafton either for parking, additional parking for either Crafton celebrates, pool use, anything that has going on in Crafton Park. So that whole corner is still being heavily utilized for the park. And so we were thinking to maintain it in that sense. Additionally, the thought was that we would put in some surfaces for different sports. Hockey has become, deck hockey is becoming really popular. Rinks are starting to pop up. Club sport, little hockey clubs are starting to pop up. And we believe that there's potentially money through the Pittsburgh Penguins to help, to help with the development of a hockey rink. And it would be also a multi-purpose surface. Also, we would another area would be some other surfaces. Pickleball is becoming really, really popular, easy game to play for all ages. No real, no real learning curve there. And then we also, I don't have a pointer, but also near the, near the, okay. I don't know if you can see the pointer there.
They should be.
Oh, so then, so there'd be a parking lot there for emergency vehicles to be able to access this whole back area. And also for people to park there if they're using that area. The road to the parking lot would go behind. If we were able to put any kind of these restaurants in this corner here, the, the road would go behind there and provide shipping acts, shipping and delivery access to those, to those two buildings there. These pads in the front would also be pads or for anything that would be attractive. And we've, we've looked around, we've looked around the country, looked around the city, a lot of there's, there's these brew houses that are popping up in restaurants that have outdoor activity, either outdoor seating. They do cornhole, they do shuffleboard. I mean, it's really becoming, it's becoming very popular, especially while COVID's kind of hurting the restaurant industry, but the outdoor activities are getting heightened. A bocce court, any number of things that we could, we could put on in this green space for activities. We've got almost a mile worth of walking, walking paths all the way around. We're trying to develop kind of a promenade down the middle where we could host, Crafton could host craft, arts festivals. We could also help host a farmer's market. So that we're, the idea is to pull, pull people to this area. And that would complement the park right across the street. So, so we're thinking that if we were able to do something like a brew house, which has become really popular amongst young professionals, young professional families, something like that would maybe draw young professional families into buying in Crafton and, you know, rejuvenating the community even more in a nice family restaurant. And then we're saying where the building is now, whether or not that can be renovated or not, but we're thinking something like a Panera Bread, which would be a from early morning to late afternoon eatery and drink where a lot of the citizen comments were that people come there and walk around and look for a place to walk. Something like a Panera Bread would be great for our seniors that could come down. Something like a Panera Bread would be great for our seniors that could come down, walk around, grab a cup of coffee. Uh, enjoy themselves every morning. So they get into a habit of, um, you know, having a cup of coffee. And with all these paths, walking around, it's one of the reasons why we want to call it wellness, a wellness area as well. So it would have benches. And, and all that. Um, so, so that, that's kind of the, this. The, the, the reason why we put in the restaurant in a brew house and the Panera Bread or something like a Panera Bread. Was because we, you know, we, we know that the green space is really the most attractive thing to do with this, and that would be fantastic if it could be just a green space. But if we need something to offset the, the economic or perceived economic benefits of a gas station. We think that, um, and we've done some, done in Bradstreet, street research. And we feel that, um, these three small, these three small building. Here, uh, could, could offset the, could offset what, uh, they're looking for as far as economic impact from the gas station. Um, additionally, we have bike pass, um, feeding this area. Uh, the bike pass would connect with Thornburg. Um, we could take it across the bridge and connect right with Thornburg. Um, we could also connect through Ingram. We could go up and connect to the, uh, trolley trail. So the bike paths, uh, connect to, can connect to other paths. Um, also we'd. Have an offshoot that would, um, go down to the CIT ball fields. As well, um, so that we're trying to connect all, all these, all these, um, active green spaces together. Um, and then additionally, a nice thing would be some sort of an access over the top of Route sixty in the form of some sort of pedestrian bridge. That would, um, alleviate kids having to go, uh, use the intersection, kids, adults, anybody use the intersection. And actually, it would actually tie the park to the, to, to this space here, which actually would just become an extension and. An extension of the park. Um, James, you got something?
Uh, yes, so, um, kind of an overlay, um, and Greg like spoke, I, I'm more like to his point, but I, just to kind of like to see it. Um, is that, you know, that this would be like, like a whole day kind of center. Um, one of the ideas that, that we had is that, uh, incentive program. Um, in the form of like, if you get like a pool pass, like a, like a yearly pool pass, um, you could then turn that into like, like ten dollars off at one of those like. Um, local businesses that'll help kind of spur spending for both Crafton Borough, but also spending to Crafton businesses. Um, keeping that, that money in and, uh, circular around us. Um, once you have like a space like that, like a nice enviable green space, um. You could do things like, you know, host like, um, you know, a Crafton Arts Fest. Um, food trucks we brought in, once again, keeping the money circulating in, uh, uh, Crafton would be one kind of major. Thing. I mean, that also, um, like park, uh, trees, benches, memorial bricks, um, those could be, you know, paid for through like a sponsoring program. Uh, so, um, people can pay for or to sponsor trees, uh, to sponsor, um, you know, uh, benches with like a little name in it. Uh, bricks as well, and that'll go a long way to kind of really make it ours, make it, uh, personal. Um, and then lastly, walking biking trails, kind of connecting, uh, Crafton to the areas around it. Crafton has a lot of really good places kind of. Away, um, and we view this as a way to kind of connect everything, um, as well as. There's like grant money to be found in developing trails, uh, for small communities. So a lot of the things that, that we like feature. Um, you can find money to do it through a variety of different, uh, grants. Um, however, that is on somebody else. Um, but, uh, features of our plans. So this is, once again, um, it's a very amateur kind of overhead view of what we would be looking at. Um, one of the. Nice things is that a lot of these, these like pieces can be swapped out or kind of reused in different ways. Um, it's all kind of like sectioned off, so you can kind of really make it something. Um, the theme of this is we want it to be somewhere where people are drawn to spend, um, time, spend money and really develop a family. Um, as opposed to just a drive-through. Um, we, we want to be somewhere where people go. And we think that kind of having things or elements like this, uh, really kind of meet that end. And, um, that's, that's really what our pursuit is all about. Um, do you have anything before you?
Yeah, we can go through this list as a summary of what we said before, as, as far as the spaces for the community-oriented businesses, the, the restaurants, the pickleball, the deck hockey. He, you know, the green space, uh, we're incorporating a nice dog park in the back, um, that's become very popular in a lot of communities. Um, these ideas are not without some, some research on our part. Um, we, we viewed the, uh. Uh, citizens' comments, and then we did research about what other cities were doing. So there, there was a fair amount of work put into this and, um, and it's, uh. And we feel that, um, you know, we, we've done some due diligence to, uh. Mimic or try to take the best pieces that we found at other communities. We're doing, um, so, so like the parking areas and things like that, we're all well thought out. Um, but not to say that any of this can't be, can't be improved upon. Um, so we wanted to launch something, to launch something positive for the community. And, um, you know, the, that's, that's where this, this all, all came from. And we wanted to make sure that we connected this development or this park. I mean, if, if, if it was all green space, that would be perfect, but, uh, we want. To make sure that we connected this with the existing Crafton Park. So now this all becomes big, a bigger Crafton Park. Um, and with, with shared, with, uh, shared, um, um, pieces from each, so.
Um, so going along, um, once again, um, this would be like an image of what, what, what could be there. Um, so like a bridge kind of like links those, those two things together. Um, and once again, it's, it's a safer method of like traversing Route, uh, sixty. Um, and it would also be a nice kind of welcome, a, you. Unique welcome to Crafton. Um, we want people to know that they're entering into somewhere special. Uh, it's, it's not just another small dying town. Um, it's, it's a thriving community. Um, and it's somewhere unique and kind of cool. Uh, a cool place to be. Um, once again, trying to attract people to invest in, uh, in, uh, uh, Crafton.
Yeah, the amount of cars that go to downtown Pittsburgh that are coming from the west that use Route sixty. Um, when you, when you travel over a bridge that's kind of linking to two beautiful spaces, people are gonna look left and right to see what's, what's this. Bridge linking. And, uh, we'd have the, you know, this, this is just a, this is just a quick rendition of what a bridge could be. But, um, but it, it, it would be, it would serve. The safety of getting, uh, linking the two together and getting people back and forth. And it also would be a statement that, okay, coming through Crafton, hey, I live out, I live out in Robinson or I live further out. You know what? This is a pretty, this is a really nice neighborhood. You know what I mean? It's much closer to town. It took me. A twenty-minute drive to get this far when I could be living here and be that close to. Town. So this would, this would be something to, to draw some attraction and to, uh, help us boast what we have.
Okay, awesome. Just fifty more slides left and then we're all done. Um, so this is coming from somewhere. Once again, um, as like Greg mentioned, this isn't just kind of like pie in the sky thinking. Um, so we, we modeled heavily off of kind of one, uh, one like specific place, not in Midtown Plaza. Um, and this is kind of the look that we're, that we're kind of going for once. Again, a community and family oriented, uh, it's a place for people to be. It's a place for people to go. Um, it's a really neat space to spend time, to hang out, to meet up. Um, and it just, it's, it's a real feature, uh, to a community. It, it, it gives you a reason to stay, uh, somewhere. Um, in this day and age, it's so easy to end up in some plan somewhere. And you're just with a whole bunch of thousand different houses that all look the same. Um, this would be something to kind of further offset Crafton as a unique, uh, really, really cool. Place to live and to be. Um, so, so once again, that is, that is Midtown, uh, Plaza. Um, great place, obviously, it, you know, like attracts people, um, attracts family. Um, small businesses are there, uh, where, where people could spend more than just a few moments getting gas and grabbing a bag of chips. Uh, which once again is kind of the theme of what we're, we're, uh, trying to go for here.
Yeah, in this one picture, this is, this is the brew house here and then the restaurant. And it's a roof, you could do all rooftop. Up seating. Um, I've been to this location, uh, several times. And people just hang, I mean, families come and they just hang out to get bite deep, to go down and meet up with people, their kids play, their. You know, you have mothers, fathers, kids playing, playing in the, in the grass or, or, you know, at some of the other features around there. Um, it's just, it's just, it's just a magnet for the, the town of Carmel, Indiana to go to. Which would be, which would be hopeful for, for Crafton and surrounding areas.
The way that we, we looked at it is that. There are elements of this around us and we would kind of be taking bits and pieces and trying to put it all together. Um, you know, um, micro breweries are kind of become like the lifeblood of small towns. People travel, um. You know, all around it to visit the like unique breweries. Uh, they always have kind of like a cool place, um, to like sit, drink and eat. Uh, pickleball, once again, it's this like growing thing. Cranberry has a, a whole league there. Um, and they're, 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 they're constantly kind of drawing people to their own, their own league. Um, you know, Carnegie, they have. That like the, um, uh, dog park, people are always there, weekdays, weekends. Um, and then once again, uh, Shenley Plaza kind of serves, um, a little bit, uh, to, you know, inspire us as just a place to kind of be. So these aren't, you know, things that aren't here, um, they're all around us and would want to capitalize on bringing them into one place and say, hey. Uh, why don't we develop a really, really cool place, uh, for people to be. Um, different things kind of going on, so it, it's not just a one-stop shop. It's, you know, like go there, stay there, you know, kind of bebop around. And, and have fun. Um, to click on?
Yeah.
So the way we view that is, is, is that Penn Dot kind of did the work for us. Um, if, if you, if you travel around here, there are signs, you know, telling people, hey, Crafton is here, Crafton's present, uh, Crafton is active. Um, we want to give a destination to those signs. Uh, we want to be a phenomenal endpoint. Uh, that when people see that Crafton sign, they know that they're heading somewhere, right? It's not just a place to fill up a tank of gas. There's a place like, oh yeah, I'm gonna spend my day in Crafton. I'm gonna spend my money in Crafton. I'm gonna invest in Crafton. I want to move to Crafton. Um, so just really take advantage of all that stuff that we already have going for us, um, in terms of infrastructure. Um, and really kind of develop, uh, something that, that, that really could be there.
Yeah, some put us on a map a long time ago and it's stuck, so let's just take advantage of it and get back on a map really strong in a positive community way.
So, once again, Greg. Said this before is that this is heavily inspired by community, uh, you know, input. Um. We, we listened to two people, we talked to two, like, you know, um, the different people around us. Um, and really, we view this as a space that kind of draws off foot traffic, spending while promoting other businesses. We don't see this necessarily as competition. Um, we see this as something that can really bolster everything else around Crafton. The shopping center is, is, is definitely helped by this because it's, it's bringing people into a place. And once you're in there, it's easier to stay in there. Um, this is gonna make us more competitive. Um, this is, this, this really gives, um, a certain kind of, um, um, magnetism. To wanting to stay and invest in Crafton. Uh, this would be a place that you could walk to. It's, it's, it's right next to neighborhoods. Um, people could walk here, spend time here. Um, we're really thinking about how do we attract young families and keep them here? And, uh, get people to come in and like restore old houses. We have great houses, you know, just like great bones. Uh, and we, we want people to kind of come in and just turn those, you know, like. Unique houses and make, uh, the most of them. One of my, uh, favorite things to do this year canceled due to COVID was like the Crafton House Tour. Um, it's an absolute blast because you could see just how people take their unique layouts and, and just kind of make it magical. Um, this would kind of give people incentive to really develop, um, what they have. Um, once again, we know that we are. Competing with a gas station that is bringing in an amount of, um, uh, money. Um, we would like to see businesses come in that, that add to the feel of the community and not necessarily just kind of. Um, dump some fast cash in, um, and then it just stays status quo. Um, we'd like to see something kind of built up and we really see these, uh, uh, three businesses as kind of offering. Um, a competition, but ultimately hopefully blowing away, um, any. Revenue, um, that could be generated by, once again, a gas station.
Yeah, and in a long term, it is, uh, we're going to, uh, I think we've been making this point that we're gonna be drawing. Uh, people to want to live in Crafton, to invest in Crafton, um, to, to invest some money in the building stock, the building stock that's already here. Uh, young, young couples coming in, buying houses, I mean, your property values go up. Um, so if you bring it, if you look at the, it, it, the community as a whole, you know, in our community just becomes very popular. And people start investing in it, then as, if, you know, if the community as a whole property values go up, it is definitely going to weigh over, oh, uh. Be a much bigger economic benefit than what one gas station is gonna be able to bring. So our whole, our whole plan here is this is a way of actually. Making Crafton, every square inch of Crafton be more popular, be more valuable. And, um, and it, and so that, like, the economic benefits, um, like. James says that the gas station is kind of short-sighted when you think about it. Uh, if, if we can get every square inch of Crafton be more valuable than, than our, our tax. Space, um, will way outweigh what you're gonna get from a, a gas station. So.
Yeah, I mean, and, uh, just to kind of hammer the point home is that we want to draw people here, uh, visiting, spending, developing, uh, living. Um, we see investing in the, the, uh, community ultimately makes the school better. Um, it makes the, you know, just whole kind of like area that much better, um, and more valuable. Um. I'm gonna say it again because it just bears repeating is that, um, the gas station to us just seems very short-sighted. Um, we see a lot more potential, uh, to really kind of invest in the quality of the, um, community and not simply, um, a little bit of the quantity. Uh, so to wrap up, um, we just kind of want to leave with this, um, once again, amateur vision, but it still kind of gives exactly what we're looking for. Um, and just a list of features. We really think that a micro brewery, a restaurant, coffee house kind of combination. Um, that'd be a real knockout punch to kind of get, um, all-day activity there. Um, a place for, 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 you know, people to exercise and to play and to have fun, um, would be great. A dog space, kind of just drawing people to walk around. Um, and the walking paths, you know, like lend itself to like just a great kind of. Um, you know, uh. A great space to just kind of, uh, you know, stretch your legs. It gives people all ages, just a place to kind of be. Um, this, this, you know, uh, this can ultimately become a. Hub that connects a whole different, um, series of kind of formerly fragmented parts of, uh, uh, Crafton, Upper Crafton, Lower Crafton, Ingram, Thorberg. Um, the, uh, CIT baseball fields. So something to just kind of keep in mind, it's almost limitless in terms of what you can do. Once you start, um, really looking at that, uh, uh, space. And then parking, I expanded parking for both parks. Um, and then finally that, uh, that like bridge that welcomes people to Crafton and hopefully welcomes them here to stay.
Yeah, and create the link between the park and this area and just makes this all a, a nice big park and. Relaxing recreation area. And as far as funding, I, I believe that, you know, once we put a plan. Together, I mean, this is, this is, this is the, you know, tip of the iceberg as far as a plan. But, uh, once we put a plan together and we start, start going out, getting funding for, getting grant. It's, uh, we've incorporated a lot of things that there is grant money, uh, being flooded out there for. So we believe once that there is some good buy-in for this and this gets developed into a, a good plan. We, we feel that, um, we can hit the road running and looking for money and help, um, help this happen.
So if you want, we can go down there right now and start digging and, uh, you know, get the whole process started for you.
Your hands.
Okay. Um, are, are there any, uh, questions, comments, anything that we could entertain?
Yeah, this is the last slide, so this was just a wrap up slide, so.
Um, I just want to say that this was awesome. Um, coming from, I work in South Side where Cheesecake Factory is and they're, um, currently actually working on doing the exact same thing down there. Um, and I mean, they had a billion dollar company come in there and, and buy out the distress notes of that entire area. And they're, you know, they had all these renderings and everything and this is, this is awesome. You know, I mean, and the amount of effort that you guys put into this is, is awesome and I'm great, definitely greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Um, yeah, it was really, it was a wonderful.
What were you saying? Sorry. A bit of lag.
Um, I, well, I wanted to say the same thing. This was a really great presentation. You guys have done a fantastic job. Um, not just in coming up with the ideas, but, but packaging them. Um, this was, this was really nice. I think that. Um. We on the planning commission can all speak for ourselves, but I think, you know, we largely have talked about. A lot of, a lot of things that we would like that you seem to have covered in here, so. Um. There's a lot of really good ideas and we, we certainly are very happy to hear all of the input from the community. Um. Is there, is there a particular like next step or answer that you're looking for from us? Because unfortunately we are, we are the planning commission. We do not own this property.
Right, right. So, so that's, that's what we, uh, government wise that. Um, you know, we're, we're not clear on. Um, we, we thought that, um, this was initiated by the fact that we thought that if. If we don't speak up and we don't put some, some, you know, some love into this. That the next thing we know, there's going to be. I'm breaking for a gas station. We're just going to say it would happen. So our thought was, we, we need to, we need to, we need to roll up our sleeves and start doing something. So this was the, this is the beginning of us rolling up our sleeves. Um, the logistics on how this will happen. Um, first I imagine there's got to be buy-in from the community. I mean, we are really. Uh, trying to listen to the community, um, and trying to, to, trying to speak, um. For the community. Um, uh, the, whether or not Crafton has to buy the property, whether or not, I mean. Somehow, somehow it has to happen. Um, if, uh, Crafton buys the property and then Crafton enlists. A developer for this, or if Crafton buys the property and somehow figures that, well, we really don't even. Need the restaurants, but, um, we're keeping green space or whatever. Um, but the goal. Here is to use this property for the community. And this was a plan that we thought not only satisfied a lot of what we heard from the community. But was also not snubbing what we know is a concern for the school board. And so, um, our thought was that we have some, some businesses there. And, but in, in also in the long term, it will be put Crafton even more on the map. In, in raise, um, in ra- help raise revenue for the school district. Um, so I guess, um. I guess next steps are, I understand that there's a, uh, there's, we have, um, the recreation, um. We have the, there's, uh, some of the grant for the Parks and Recreation Study. Um, so we don't know that this could be. Part of that thought process and what we're going to, and what, what's going to happen with the Parks and Recreation Study, but, um. Yeah, I think we need to do due diligence and make sure the brakes are put on for anything short sighted as a gas station. And so, and to look and really do our, do our due diligence.
I would say that you guys have done, have taken a great step here. And, um, having this, just having a. An idea that's packaged up the way that you've, you've put it together here very clearly and very thoroughly is, um, is a great step. To just start circulating those ideas and looking for.
That'd be great.
For potential support or funding opportunities.
Right, right.
One thing to note too is it.
I mean, uh, it, it like seems to us that, um, that. The, the like school's looking to make money, so, um, I think ideally Crafton would end up buying that land from them, right? Um, and then the school can make their money and then Crafton could like develop. Um, or, and I mean, it. Certainly, we're not privy to a whole bunch of like, the like strings that kind of like, um, move everything. Um, but that'd be just something to, uh, to, um, consider.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be necessary for Crafton to buy the parcel. To have a developer get interested in, in something like this.
There are certainly some opportunities to look for support or funding to potentially. Expand or acquire or get help acquiring from the county property for recreational space. And I cannot say at all that that would actually come through for us, but having something like this makes it. Makes it easier to go ask.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right. I think if, 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 uh, if Crafton did own the property, then we would have control of what goes on. Um. I don't, you know, unless we have, if you got a developer and you really did have, uh, I. I mean, really, really strict ideas and strict rules about what, what the developer would do or would not do. I mean, if it was a developer within Crafton leased the land off the developer for the use, I mean, it's. I don't know. I think a hundred years from now would just be nice that it's, it belonged to Crafton.
I, there, there are many ways that could happen too, so I'm only saying this from a, helping you understand what might be most. Feasible option.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, with this kind of layout, something that may make sense would be to. Have it be a parcel that were sold to a developer and a parcel that remained with Crafton. Because I, I don't think that. It could be divided into parcels. It could be a, a portion of it. Um, developed by a developer and a portion of it kept for Crafton. But again, that is, that is way beyond what. The planning commission can actually, can actually do here today. So this is just a. You know, common processes, um.
Yeah, I, I. Eric, I, I, I'll jump in and, uh, just say I appreciate both of you for, uh, putting this together and coming out. I think that, um, it's tremendous. Um, and it's this kind of organic support from the community that gets this stuff done. Um, so, um, I can't thank you enough. And to add to the long list, there, there's always community development corporations. There's, um, you know, there's, uh, B corporations that could be formed. There's lots of different ways, um, that these problems are solved every day. All of them take time, all of them take money. Um, the, 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 the one thing, if I had to look for negative and I really can't find one. I'd have to say you'd have to reshape that bridge to make sure that it's, uh, it's compliant to the community. Right now, we got to make sure that, um, we make it equitable and, uh, and fair for, uh, folks who, uh, um, who are, uh, in a wheelchair.
Um, I would actually, I, I would like to echo that. The one thing that I really wanted, you know, would kind of nitpick on this too. Is that the pedestrian bridge is very expensive. And that is a Penn dot road, which is going to make it procedurally difficult to get done. And Penn, um, pedestrian bridges are actually not very successful in most places. Um, especially in getting that kind of streetscape and activity back and forth, what I would really like to see. And we have talked about this and there's interest in this too, um, and support, you know, countywide, um, to just have better, safer streets. Um, slow the traffic on that corridor, have better, safer sidewalks and really strong crosswalks. And that might be something that you want to, to continue or to start integrating into this because the pedestrian bridge is going to be a tough one.
Not, not to say there couldn't be a beautiful iron gateway, uh, to Crafton.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah.
But, um, yeah, it's just the, the, the compliance issue, uh, the traffic safety issue and the, 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 the need and expense there.
Sheer cost.
The bridges.
Yeah, right.
That's it, but, uh, other than that, you know, it's, it's, it's lovely. It's, uh, it has a lot of, it hearkens to a lot of the, the thoughts and ideas that have come out. Um, uh, over the course of the past, uh, some, uh, year and, uh, four months now. Um, so I, I think that, um, it's, it's, it's great to see. And, um, the, the organic, I'll say organic effort from the community, uh, I know is, uh, it's, it's, it's great. It's very well appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Well, well, we'll keep plugging along, so, um. We don't, we, we could, we could use, uh, a little help from in what direction, what our next steps should be. Um.
Yes, the planning commission will, will pass this on to the Carleton School District and Council. And since October, I don't believe any decisions have been made on this topic. Um, so when and if it gets reignited, um. And there's next steps, uh, you know, or questions about this plan for those that weren't here. We'll definitely, we'll definitely let you know. I, I do want to ask you to just state your names and addresses for the record, so anybody watching this later. Knows, um, so if you wouldn't mind doing that before, before ending your presentation, that'd be great.
Sure, um, James Mangat, ninety-six Sterrett Street, Crafton.
And I'm Greg Wozniak, one seven seven three Barre Avenue, Crafton.
Thanks, guys. Again, we thank you so much. You, you putting this together and presenting to us, I, I, um. Look forward to seeing the PowerPoint in an email so that I can package it up. And we have recorded this, so we'll be making this available, um, to anybody that wants to watch. As well as explicitly sending it to the school district and council and urging them to watch as well.
Thank you very much.
And we want to thank you guys for all the work you're doing and to giving us the, uh. Give, given us a little bit of the, the energy. Um, we see your energy that you guys are putting into it. We thought we wanted to do our share.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I guess the additional thing we would say is we'll be passing this on, but also, you know, we don't. We don't own this property, so we're not taking any concrete steps, but we will certainly, we're not going to forget your, your plans. We'll keep these in mind. Um, as, as other things come up, as we go through some of our upcoming, um. You know, pursuits for funding, if, we'll, we'll keep those in mind. They certainly won't get.
If you need help with this now. Okay, so, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, so we're going to hop back to, let me share my screen again. Um, we're going to hop back to the agenda. Item for reorganization now that Eric's on. Um, so as I had mentioned on, at the December meeting, I don't plan to continue on as. Chairperson this year, um, so I'd like to open it up for any discussion on that and, uh, any motions to appoint a new. Chairperson for twenty twenty-one.
Um, I would like to motion to appoint, uh, Kirsten Compatello as the chair, the head chairperson.
Um, I have, I have volunteered to be, to, um, put myself in the running for a chairperson.
I second that motion.
Yeah, I'll second as well.
Okay, let's take a well call vote, um. Colton, you motioned so you're a yes?
Yes.
Um, Rich Kramer?
Yes.
I say yes, and Eric?
Yes.
Great. So Kirsten is unanimously the chairperson. For twenty twenty-one, and then we need to do the secretary as well, so. Um, Rich, you've been the secretary the last two years, I think.
Yes.
Are you feeling you need a relief, a relief from that role? Or what, what are your thoughts on that?
No, I'm getting more comfortable in a role, maybe I'll get these minutes out to you a lot faster. I, if you want me to stay on, I will stay on, uh, no problem staying on.
Does anyone else want to be the secretary?
I'll just motion, uh, for Rich to be the, the secretary. How about that?
Yeah, a second.
Alright.
Um, okay, Eric?
Aye.
Kirsten?
Aye.
I. I say yes, and Colton?
Yes.
Alright, great. So unanimous agreement. For Rich to be secretary for twenty twenty-one. Great, so. Um, with that, I can turn the meeting over to Kirsten, um. But I, I can jump in to provide any updates. If. Um, so for, for item six.
Wait a minute, there's no celebration, no gavel? What the hell? What kind of, what kind of sweatshop is this? Congratulations, Kirsten Compatello.
Oh, thanks, thanks guys for making me chairperson. I will.
Thank you.
Do my best to keep, keep us running.
That's great.
I think you're going to make a great chairperson.
Sure.
Um. Uh, um, I don't mean to keep running the meeting, but I do want to just jump in about the grant status for the D C D map grant. We did receive, uh, an extension letter from E P D or, or. Hopefully the consultant that will do the work. We haven't actually contracted with them yet. Um, but the extension letter commits to them. Uh, keeping the, the same terms of the contract as long as the project starts, uh, kicks off by July first of twenty twenty-one. Um, after that, we would have to go back to them again to negotiate terms. So what I've, um, asked both Ingram and Crafton councils to do is vote. To contract with E P D. And in the extension letter, it makes it extremely clear that if technical work doesn't start. Um, there will, there will not be any fees incurred. So there's really no risk to signing the paperwork and just getting them on board. Um, ahead of receiving word about the D C E D grant funding. So that's what I've asked both, um, councils to do and run that through our manager Doug sample. And it's supposed to be on the. The February eleventh discussion meeting, I believe, and then voting on the twenty-fifth. Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um. So hopefully that's moving. Does anyone have anything to say about that before?
Comment, you know, it's, it's not a, uh, you know, it's, it's all about priorities and it's not, you know, this is. This is, this is urgent, um, but, uh, I don't know that it's a time sensitive for February if the, if the. If the council has other things, I know, you know, I know that, um, um, there's a lot of stress right now. Uh, around sewer pipes, you know what I mean, and streets and that sort of thing. Um, but it's, so long as it, it, it seems like, and I see Coletta's on it, you know, I don't, you know, you're not going to speak for everybody, but. Um, if they're, if they're on board to like deal with it in March, that's fine, you know, get spring sometime, spring, March is good. Um, I would much rather, um, be tackling, you know, kick the can down the road. We're all, we all know we're going to do it and E P D is going to get it. Um, because there's, you know, there's been recommendations and nobody's objected and everybody's on board, she's timing. And when this was urgent, um, there weren't the big things with the sewer pipes, uh, that came up. Right now there are. So, you know, I think that that's probably the prioritization of council for the next. I don't know, is the, is the, is the bond offering done? You know what I mean? That's, that, that stuff is, that's a nightmare, you know? Um, so give them a, a little bit of a, uh, slack on getting that all done. Uh, but don't stay hot and heavy on it and, you know, just say, you know, let's say, ask them by March, you know, can you guys, you know, get, get on the sixty, thirty days? Sixty days down the road, um, tackle this and whatever they have to do, advertise it again. I don't even know, can I just, can I just vote for it and be done with it? You know, that sort of thing. It seems like it, um. Yeah, so.
Original, um, scope change, which was due October fifteenth.
I've like been out there for some time already. I, I think we can ask that it be, that it be, um, addressed properly. We intend to go forward with it. We need to give them an answer.
I think March is good because, and I, I motioned, we asked them to put on the March meeting.
Well, we've already motioned that they. Well, we've already motioned that they. Do the vote, I don't think it's necessary to vote to get to motion again.
Then move on, yeah, whatever they get to it. Let's just hound them like the dogs we are, right, let's just hound them and make sure they get it done, you know, by March, you know? I mean, it's already in the January and February, and, you know, like I said, I mean, I know, I've spoken to a couple. I've spoken to a couple of them, and their, their hair's, their hair's coming out because of this, this whole, this bond and all this other stuff, so. You know, it, it doesn't have to be done in February, it's still snow falling, you know, there's still a pandemic, there's still all that stuff, but. What I would like, what I would like to press for is when we're done with this, I'd like to change the conversation to, to something else, I think we should motion for tonight.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure we need to keep talking about this, I, I, you probably saw, I, I did send an email. To all council and to the manager asking that it be voted on. I think it's important to get E P D an answer and really have our ducks in a row, so if we learn that we win. The work at the, by the end of March, like we think we will, we're actually ready to start, instead of having to wait for a bunch of meetings to do paperwork. And better just to do it earlier and make sure.
Don't disagree with any of that, I just think give them, give them some padding to land the plane on what they're working on, you know, give them, give them a month to get it done, that's all.
Okay, so, I'm gonna turn it back over to Kirsten.
We've already put in a motion that, that we asked them to look at that, so we don't need to do anything different, right, we're not. Talking about changing our motion.
Let it go, we can bring it up, let's put it on the agenda for February and see if they're, they're talking about it, and if not, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll lobby them hard. We'll write them a, we'll write them another email in March. Right, I mean, that's, that's all we can do, we're a recommendation body.
Well, it's, it's been out there for a while, so hopefully they get to it and we'll review it in February.
I just want to defend council, I've been on council, that they've gone through a shitstorm over the past couple of months here. With a lot of priorities, and this was a top priority when we were all looking at it, you know, I remember being on council, what was it, like a billion years ago? When we all say, yeah, let's get this done, let's get it done right away, but there, there are certain things that have come up, and I think the bond issue is really the elephant in the room. And, you know, once that's done, hopefully it's done, I don't know if it's done, it should be done soon, hopefully, right? They've been talking about it so much and all the, all the stuff has gone through, so, you know, once that's done, then yeah, turn your attention to this, but in the meantime. In the meantime, I'd like to talk about something also with E P D, that I think that we should really. Really rally around and get active.
So Eric, our next item on the agenda is to review the meeting minutes, but did you have something else that needed to be added here?
Yeah, I'd like to add on to this, the other, the, the recreation plan. Because I think that is something. You know. The zoning, to me, is a spring issue, right? But let's not wait till spring to do anything. E P D wrote the, the zoning, or I'm sorry, I, I may have a mistake, E P D wrote the. The parks and recrea-, whatever it's called, the recreation plan, right, they did that. Last time around, and there's money on the table, there's, there's interested political bodies. That look at Crafton as, as people to get stuff done, right? And they, they just need us to update that rec plan, E P D did it, I think that. I think that not only should we, what I'm saying right now is I'm making a motion. To tell. What is it, the council, to, to tell them to, to jump on approving E P D. To get the rec plan done now in February, next meeting, as soon as they possibly can, so we can take advantage of the funding. That's behind our update to the recreation plan, and I think that we should also be forming. Or recommending that they authorize the forming. Of a committee, right, and maybe it's the planning commission, maybe it's not the planning commission.
There should be a steering committee in there, and I think there's an issue with D C N R, Doug, can you jump in on the status of this?
One moment. Council is reviewing the, the grant and the, the parameters of what we're. Proceeding to do in the recreation thing, but I can't really comment on anything other than that, we're, we're just reviewing it and. We're reviewing it, and we, we, we understand the need, but I think that one of the caveats actually is that. We wanted to apply for funding, and I think we can already do that with the twenty fourteen or twenty sixteen grant. So, but that is something that the council is reviewing in terms of the recreation piece, so.
Recreation plan, is that something that based on the anticipated amount of the project, will we have to put that out to bid? I'm not sure we can just select.
No, it's professional services, none of us have got the bid.
Twenty-six thousand dollars too. Usually there would be an R F Q put out for the work, but if they wanted directly awarded to E P D, they, council could do that.
Is that the entire size of the project? I know that was the grant.
I don't know, that's a good question, well, I, I'm not sure they know how much, they haven't gotten bids, I don't know if they know how much a consultant. Would think it would cost.
We can certainly recommend to council that they go forward with looking for. A consultant for that. And we can recommend that they look at E P D.
Yeah, my, my motion is to, to recommend they look at E P D.
But I have a concern about that, Eric, because if you think that it's okay to hold on the zoning, I'm concerned about rushing forward with the recreation plan. Which in my mind is going to be a, a much larger. Area for public involvement and public comment. And I think we should make sure that when we do that, we have time to do it, and if there's a chance that we can do more in person, I think that plan. Would better benefit from. From in-person community involvement. Whereas the zoning, you know, in a community like ours that's fairly built out, there are not a lot of things that will change. As substantially, but I think the rec plan will get a lot of people energized. That would be my, my concern about trying to rush forward on one, but not the other. But. There thoughts from anyone else about how we, how soon we prioritize the recreation plan?
My, my priority.
I don't mean to cut you short, Lydia, but she, she raised her hand on the Zoom.
Go ahead, Coletta.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple comments about the, the rec plan, as far as to just give you information about where. You know, my, my understanding, and again, I always speak for myself and not for all of council, but. I believe that the input that we've gotten is that, so I, I understand that there is a grant cycle. Coming up in the early April timeframe, which may be kind of pushing a, a little bit on the desires here. But it's my understanding at this point that D C E D would allow us to. Basically use the existing. Plan. To. Examine whether there is something that we do want to do a grant application for in this cycle. Now, one of the biggest concerns is Eric has been saying, there's a lot going on with the bond and several other issues. And my personal concern about even pushing for this, this cycle in April. Would be that it's a fifty fifty match, and I think we would be looking for a modest. Project, if we are going to do anything, because I do agree with. What Kirsten was saying with regard to the parks and rec being a, a, a bigger, a, a bigger issue. And that it needs more, it, it needs the, the input from community. And I think that there are actually, you know, quite a number of diverse ideas that. I have heard expressed, and I think that that will be an opportunity to really tease them out in full. And what we want to make sure of is that we get a really good big picture. About what the community is interested in, what the possibilities are, while we're being careful to steward. Any resources we have in the bond proceeds for moving forward with, you know, recreational things. I mean, including what might be possible with the property that we just heard the presentation on, so. You know, I, I don't know if that helps, we take it seriously, and I also believe from what I have heard. That we are definitely in the clear to appoint E P D. To work on that plan with us, to up, update the plan. Because, you know, as we've pointed out, their knowledge, they did the previous one, and so anyway, there's. I think there's a lot going on, a lot possible, and we do want to take. A slower, more complete look at this with at the same time, maybe taking a look internally. With, is there something like what's been, what I've heard is potentially looking at the pool house. Which was one of the things that was in the plan, and whether we could scale back and or do some work internally. So we might come up with a, a modest proposal where, where we'd be more comfortable with a fifty fifty match. I hope this helps.
So Coletta, can you clarify, you're talking about a grant cycle in April. That could earn us a fifty fifty match toward a project that would not be. Part of the recreational plan that could come as part of the recreational plan update that could come. At a later time or within the next year as part of a separate grant.
Yeah, yeah, or, or multiple grants over multiple years, so what we're talking about is looking at what's, what's in the, the existing. Two thousand fourteen plan, because we have confirmed from what my understanding is, we have confirmed. That we can work from there and see if we can identify a project that's in that plan. That is still a priority for the community, and that would be of a, of a modest enough size. That council would feel comfortable in guaranteeing a fifty fifty match. And I don't think it would, it would, it would not impede doing a full recreation plan. And I, you know, with the grant, that's what the expectation is, is that we will go, my, my expectation, my understanding. From several of my other fellow, fellow councilpersons, that there is great support for doing. A full and thorough park and recreation plan update. And then looking, looking at and deciding, you know, priorities and making sure that there's plenty of, of community input, and then we take our time on it.
Thanks for that. Context.
Okay. Happy to provide it.
Can I just ask Coletta one more question, there, there was a resolution signed with Ingram. That both the Crafton and Ingram will pay for the D C E D match of fifty percent. And that's already factored into your budgets, right?
No, no, okay, you're, you're, you have switched and you're asking me about. The rezoning? Yes, so. Yes, that is the, the ability to pay for our portion if we. Get the grant is in the budget.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's no budgetary issue here, I think that it is a matter of, and, and certainly. You know, it, it's a matter of, that we're working with another borough. And, you know, both the, the park, and, and as Eric stated, I mean, just all the other things that are going on. And finding, you know, finding the right timing, and I think that there is every intention to work with E P D. Again, I just said that as an individual councilperson. But I do believe that that is, that is the case, and that we, you know, we'll find the timing that works. And that E P D agrees with. Does that answer your question, Lydia?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so back to my motion, what I'm suggesting is if we press council, Coletta and company, right? To get this, this zoning stuff done in March, right, give them, give them a break. But the refresh of the, of the, the, what do you call it, the rec, the park plan. Refresh of the park plan makes an application stronger, if that, that window's in, in April, you know, being able to set, submit an application saying, yeah, yeah. We're using the fourteen plan, but we're also, we're also in the midst of updating our plan to be more comprehensive, but we're certain. That, you know, whatever it is, I, you'll know, I, I always, I'm, I'm upfront on the agenda, I think Pool House is a great one. Because ain't nobody gonna pay for it locally, because we don't have the money, but to match it, we can do wonderful things to the Pool House, and it's a. The biggest asset in the community, and my goodness, is that place gonna be a godsend for people when this pand- pandemic is over this summer, right? Hopefully that can all be, be all shovel ready, that'd be great, right, well, we have to give ourselves an opportunity to do that. And the only way we're gonna give ourselves an opportunity to do that is by acting now, and by acting now, it's, it's giving a kick in the pants to council saying, yeah, yeah, you guys are busy. Push this through, get that going, so when you make that application, you know, yeah, you've got the politician saying that, yeah, 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 get your application. It's all gonna be good, but it's gonna look even better if we're serious about it, we're updating the plan as well, right? And, and, and it sends a message, say, Crafton's serious, Crafton gets stuff done, you can trust us to act on it, because you have to remember. I was around in twenty fourteen when I guess when all this went down, but what happened was Crafton got an offer to update the, the Pool House. But Crafton didn't act on it, they gave the money back, they wouldn't match it, they didn't have it, they, whatever happened, I don't know what happened. All I know is they were given a yes, and they ended up saying no.
I think we're talking about a couple of different things here now, though, we're talking about the potential to do a project, which is to update the Pool House. Which comes out of the previous twenty fourteen Parks and Recreation Plan that we have, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And then we're also talking about a. New Parks and Recreation Plan Update, which would be a separate thing from the Pool House.
It would be.
Renovations and improvements.
Updating the plan, Kirsten, updating the plan is, is what I'm saying, suggesting is, that is a good show of faith. In that application to the, whatever it is, D C N R, whoever you're sending that application and saying, yes, we're, we're acting off of the twenty fourteen plan. Seven years ago, we still have the same problems we have, and we'll have more, but we are certain, and, and, you know, who, who are we to say it's the Pool House? But picking a project like, like Coletta said, that's modest, that's incremental, that's affordable, that's, you know, that's, that's reasonable. Because we could all come up with ten projects each that, that fit that criteria, right, there's no shortage of projects. But what I'm saying is enhancing the good faith value of the grant application by saying that you're in process. With that seven-year-old update of that rec plan, that park plan, I think is a great, great, great optics. And a great way to assure the best possible chance of getting the award.
So do we want to, do we have thoughts from anybody else on how? How much we want to push for the parks plan to proceed? While we are not yet proceeding with other items that are on our agenda, including the zoning that has been stalled for a year?
It's, it's almost been two, I, my priority is for sure zoning, I have made that very clear. To, I think, everyone who talks to me. I, I can't support other, starting new other things that take community input when. I can't even get council to buy in on this one that's been stalled and throttled for two years.
I don't see it as stalled and throttled, I was there, we're finally at a point where a decision can actually be made.
And no one's making it.
I would like to see that decision be made, and I would like to see us move forward on that, and I would like.
So you're willing to miss the April cutoff for an opportunity, something that we're gonna do anyway, you're willing to.
Any April cutoff, it's already the end of January, I think that.
You're gonna, so you're gonna forego having this in motion for an April grant for an artificial deadline. Like you said, couldn't get it done for two years. We finally have a commitment. We'll have it done in March or so. Certainly have it done by July.
I don't have so many resources. I've been told this time and time again. Doug's only one person. Our, our community, people that we would tap for steering committees, there's only so many of them.
I don't think we're missing an April deadline either. We can, we can revisit this next month if we see that the zoning is moving forward. We can also, the application can always go in in April, whether we, for, for funding for another project, whether we've decided that it should be this one at this time or not. But I think we also brought up the point
By council, they can decide to do whatever they want without
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, we make a suggestion. That's all. All right, well, we gotta vote because I motioned. Somebody has to either second or we kill it, right? No one seconds, then we can move on.
I'll suggest that we revisit that one next month. For an update. And we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is reviewing the December twenty twenty meeting minutes.
I motion to approve the December twenty twenty meeting minutes.
I second.
We all agree?
Agreed.
Yes.
I agree. And then our next item on the agenda is to follow up on website action items from the December twenty twenty meeting.
Yeah, I'm thoroughly disappointed in that. Anyone wanna speak first?
Eric, I know that you had made, you'd had some ideas about updates to the website. Do you want to tell us what you
Yeah, so
requested and what has happened?
So what I requested was that we'll, the response to requests is we'll look into it. I put in another service request yesterday and there was no, there was no action taken on it. So i- in effect, you know, there's a lot of people that are very busy that work in a borough. And this is a priority to us, but it's just gonna have to fit their timelines. I'm fortunate for me to say that. I didn't think it was a super big issue. But apparently it's, it's tough to, you know, no one can, no one can manufacture time. And so I, you know, I, I'm disappointed. What we're looking for is an automated response to the inbound web traffic on the, on the service request. But I don't know, because it's not said anywhere. And I've asked a thousand times for it to be part of the, 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 the council's meeting minutes. Is what is the web traffic on these things, right? Because we don't get any web traffic that I'm aware of. We don't get any web traffic that's coming through the community visioning page. Four times, I think, in the six months I've been here, five months, whatever it is. So that's next to zero with six thousand people living here. So I don't know how many service requests are coming in through the, through the city page. But I know when I was on council, in the course of a year, there were seventy-seven. That's like five or six a month, half a dozen a month. So I, you know, I, I'd love to see it better utilized. I'd love to see it better promoted. I'd love to see us have, Coletta, be the first person to, to, to tell me to stop talking because you've heard it and you say it all before, a better marketing presence for our town. But, you know, right now, we, I guess other, the bond issue, I guess, maybe, uh, there's a lot of projects. But I did get, I did get a response from, from, from the borough office, said that they're looking into it.
Did they, Eric, did they mention anything about how feasible it will be? Did they seem to be, did they seem to think that it was going to work?
Acknowledgement. It wasn't a, it wasn't a four-point plan, wasn't a three-point plan, it wasn't a two-point plan, it was an acknowledgement.
Okay, well, we can follow up with them and see if, see if the
I, I found that
Last meeting was at the holidays, so I'm sure it got buried in a lot of, a lot of other things that were happening.
Tough time of year to get stuff done, that's for sure.
I found it's extremely helpful to the administrative office to provide exact text for what you want posted and what you want changed so that they don't have to come up with everything themselves.
I offered a phone call and in that phone call, I would be more than happy to write whatever, whatever anyone needs.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's not for me to say, but I think creating a template would go, would be a start.
I'm not gonna bother creating a template if it can't be done.
I'm sure it can be done.
I, I don't know that. How does the service request mechanics work? I don't know that, you know?
No, it's just, it's, they've set it up to go, they set it up originally to go to my email. And then I requested that it go back to the Crafton clerk for responses. So if we craft the auto response, she can either respond with that, you know, copy and paste that.
Or it can be an automatic rule. That would, that would be good to know, yeah.
The admin, the website administrator set it up to
Try it again, and this time I will write a template. Okay.
That's just my
I, I, I don't know, I just, it's just, it's like pulling teeth. You know what I mean? You ask a question, you say, oh, I'll get back to you. Nobody gets back to you. Eh, that's disappointing.
Well, Eric, if you want to draft some text for, for a standard template auto response, I'm sure you'll do a great job with that. But if you want to send it around for, for, to split it up, if you, if you want any help putting that together, feel free to email around, because I'll help you write that too. Our next big item on the agenda here is workshop number four, planning. So let's move on to that one because that's gonna be a big one. We've got our workshop number four for Crafton Boulevard is next week. That's scheduled for Wednesday evening. And it's already being advertised Wednesday evening at, um, we're doing that one at seven o'clock, right? Or did we change the timing to match our new?
It's at seven still.
Those, those workshops had always been at seven, so that one will still be at seven o'clock next Wednesday. I had started a PowerPoint. So I don't know if the rest of the planning commission has had a chance to look over that so far. The, the theme for next week's public workshop will be the Crafton Boulevard Streetscape and Sewer Separation Upgrades and Enhancements. And because we first put this on our workshop schedule of topics that impact the community that were potentially of interest to talk to the community about, all of these got, got scheduled, got listed out last summer. That sewer separation project has been progressing since. And a lot of the feedback that came out of the visioning document and the community workshops that we had in those first two sessions, we reviewed some of the ideas with the community that could impact that corridor. And a lot of those are already proceeding. Project is funded, it's in, it's in engineering design phase now. So the, my approach to what we can present next week will be a little bit more of a, an overview of what has happened, where the project has, has come from and how it's been impacted by the community workshops and the community input and how it's been guided by the comprehensive plan and what it looks like now. We'll be presenting what it is, what the current engineering plans and drawings look like. So all of those are in the presentation that's been drafted.
Yeah, I stopped. If you wanna pull that up, I did look at it and add some content. Just kind of follow on your notes, Kirsten. I think you did a really good job setting up the outline.
Let me just bring that up. Give me a moment. So can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
So we can go over this as in-depth or as not in-depth as you all want tonight. For anyone who else who's on the phone, this will all be presented again in a more complete format next weekend. So this is all still our, our working draft as we put together this presentation. This is our workshop four. We have an agenda that will go over the introduction to us, the project history, where this came from, with the purpose for doing the sewer separation in the first place, the Alka-San consent decree, what we're trying to do, where that project originated in terms of trying to update our, our stormwater capabilities and reduce flooding and, and also bring us into compliance. And then go over some of the funding sources that have led to this, the funding that we've already acquired and funding that's helping this be implemented, helping these first implementation steps. This is last year's budget. It was used in one of our workshops last year as well. This was used in the Linden workshop. So I've started to put in some of this content and I need to fill out some of the background and the narrative a bit more. But this is, what I was thinking, it would be the first section of this, of, of next week's workshop is really describing where this came from and why it's happening and what the benefit to the community will be and how it's being funded. And all of this, again, all of this is already in progress. We then have some additional funding that's been submitted. I need to verify with, with council the exact status of this, and these are placeholders. But we talked last year on the planning commission about some of the streetscape improvements that we wanted to see neighborhood-wide or across all of Crafton. We talked about some of the overall ideas we wanted to promote as a planning commission. And some of those were safer streets, more walkable streets, more crosswalks, more street trees, things that reflect our, our character and our scale here and things that our, our comprehensive plan was asking for and our community is asking for. And so some of those ideas, after we talked about them, they have been put into grant requests to help cover the additional cost of including, including street improvement, streetscape improvements on top of those, the sewer separation project. As we rip up the street, we're gonna have to rebuild it back. So the whole idea is can we build it back better? So again, this is on our, this is on our planning commission drive. So if anyone has comments today or in the future, feel free to come in here and put in some of your own thoughts, ideas. I do have their plan as of last year, so I can prepare that and put that in. And then this, if you guys haven't seen it yet, this is their current proposal. As you can see, come on. Oh, it's not gonna let me zoom in. Not while I'm sharing the screen. So as you can see, this is what Crafton Boulevard is, this is the current proposal for Crafton Boulevard. After that street is ripped up to do the sewer separation project and then put back in place, it's got some improvements to it that will, you know, build it back better than is, than what is currently there. So improved sidewalks, some narrow driving lanes, better delineations of on-street parking, street trees, clear sidewalks.
Can you explain the bulb out with Baldwin Road? What does that mean?
What are you looking at right now?
On your slide, where Baldwin intersects with Crafton by Coletta's house.
Right here? Oh, yeah, so they're showing a bulb out at that corner, which the current configuration right now, and there's actually more slides on this further down, that intersection is a very large, wide intersection. And this house down here that's on the corner, it's very close to the street, so it makes it, makes invisibility kind of impacted for people who are making that turn. Especially for those making a left turn, there's some visibility issues at this corner. And just the wide turning radius of that road makes it a very long stretch of pavement for pedestrians to cross and makes it far wider than is needed for two lanes of traffic. So you get multiple cars lined up at different points in the intersection, kind of a haphazard approach to the intersection. So kind of a common approach to make intersections like that much safer for both cars and for pedestrians is to narrow those, those turning points. So the cars are, have a much more directed flow. They're not allowed to just hang out any which way in the street. They have a directed flow that kind of keeps those lanes very, very clear and delineated and then keeps the crossing points much shorter and more manageable for pedestrians. And gives that, that bulb out, gives more space for pedestrians to wait and linger and gather at the corner. And what you're doing by having that bulb out is you're having cars have a more protected space to pull all the way up towards, towards the end of, of where that block ends. And then wait there to make a turn where the visibility is better. Rather than right now, you have a tendency to want to think that the intersection begins where the curve of that, of the block begins, which is, which is way back here. I don't know if you guys can see my, my cursor. But just bringing that pinch point up closer, it means that cars that pull up further to make their left turn are more protected. And they can turn from a place where they have more, better visibility.
Yeah, from what I understand, this is, this is, you know, we talk about the, whatever the name of the park is, the trolley trail. This was the trolley. And when they, when they deprecated the, decommissioned the trolley, they just paved the road and made it wider. And no one's really done anything since. I think this is, this, this intersection seems like, seems like it always comes up, you know what I mean? Anytime there's a topic, whether it's a survey or the prior workshops, you know, there, there's, there's feedback always about this particular intersection. So I really think that you do a good job of explaining what it is. If we do this project for, for the meeting next week, and I know that we've been planning it, so, you know, we kinda have to. I think in retrospect, as far along as it is, it's kind of weird now because we, we've kind of built the workshop as a way to gather public input. Well, you know, the drawings are made and the shovels are almost in the ground. It's, it's, it's ducked in, impact change at this stage. But I think it's still an opportunity to educate and I think that this is a big deliverable that a lot of people have had, had, had issue with. And, you know, prior to meeting you, Kirsten, I never heard of the word bulb out. I never, you know, it makes all the sense in the world. I just, you know, wasn't, wasn't in my world.
I think it's a good point, Eric, about how, you know, we, we actually have been thinking about this, this, now that we, we put this workshop off for so long and we addressed other topics that were more pressing for the community first, the, this project has been moving along. But I don't think that we need to present this as something where we're not seeking public input. Because actually, this, the fact that this happened, this happened because a public input was sought through the visioning workshop and it was implemented. And then what I would like to do in this workshop is to, you know, really describe how these ideas that we've been having and ideas that we've been hearing from the community have been implemented and can make these changes. And then keep that conversation going and get people to, you know, feel free to speak up and tell us where, where should we be looking next.
I, I, yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. You know, like I said, I think what you just said is really important and I, I think we'll, we'll cover it. Is, is the fact that, you know, the, the train's already down track. There's limited availability in terms of input that can be made. It doesn't mean that input can't still be said. Because there, there, I'm sure there's fine tuning that, that will happen along the way, even with engineering and shovels and all the stuff that's on the way. But I think, I think, and I'm just, just thinking about ideas here to kind of reinforce the fact that this is coming soon to your backyard, you know? Would it be worth an invitation? And, you know, I don't know, we'd have to go through council, all that sort of thing. Would it be worth an invitation to either this group, the marketing firm that put this together, to talk about what the Grow Grant is? Or perhaps even our engineer gateway to come in and talk about kind of the, you know, more of the, you, you know, it just kind of conveys the, the, the fact that this is of the, you know, it just kind of conveys the, the, the fact that this is going to happen. It's already on the way. If the engineer spoke for a few minutes, is that too much? Too late in the game? I don't know. I'm just trying to, to one, you know, what do you guys think?
I think it's, it certainly is something that I'd be open to inviting them. I don't, I think we'd have to get, I'm sure they would charge for that, right? So we'd have to talk about whether we want them to spend their time.
Permission to spend his money and all that sort of stuff. But yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, Coletta, go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, don't say it, Coletta. Kirsten has to say it. She's supposed to be.
Hi, hi, you there?
All right, Philip, go ahead.
Counsel would be more than happy to send the engineer to discuss the process and, and the cooperation between Alka-San and the planning commission and the vision document. So anything that you'd like from the engineer, they'd be more than happy because the more education we can put out there to the public, the better we will all be because we have several other projects coming down the pike. So we are more than happy to send the engineer to your meeting.
I think that's great. Should we just reach out to them directly and ask them what, give them some, some bullet points on what we would like them to talk about?
Re- reach out to the manager and copy me and Coletta and Doug, if you're still here, do you have permission to, you know, move this forward?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Well, I'll put together then a, a brief email with a little recap of what we'd like them to talk about, to give them an idea of what we're asking for. And then I'll send that to, to the three of you to approve and send on.
Can I, can I just jump in with another suggestion? One of the things we talked about with a website, one of the action items I did took away, takeaway, and granted, no one else got back, but Doug, dig it back to me. There is a distribution email. I really would encourage us to use it. Phil, Coletta, no offense, you're wonderful and all, but you're always there. You're always involved. There's other people on council and then they think that, you know, we're all talking about them without them involved. I think that we should use it. It's council@craftinborough.com. That way they all get it. They might choose not to respond, you read it or blah, blah, blah. But I, I, I really think that we should get in the habit of communicating with that body with the whole email. That way they're all, you know what I mean?
I think that's a good, yeah, thanks. That's a good reminder.
And I did start CC them on emails before this meeting. So I think it's a great point.
And thank you, Doug.
Well, that makes, if the engineers are able to attend, that will make putting together the finer points of this presentation easier. It was one of my big missing items to add the details about the grow grant and the Alka-San piece. Yeah, beyond that, we are, we're going to kind of circle back to some of the things that we started talking about with our public sessions back in August. And I think really repeat some of these, take them a little further. And we're really focusing this workshop on emphasizing what this project is, educating people on what it means, why it's happening, where it came from, and then highlighting the effect that, that public input and participation has had and how we can make, how we can use this type of process to continue making these kinds of changes in our community. I think that's what I would like this workshop to get across. And it looks like Lydia has definitely been adding some content to these. So thank you very much.
No problem.
Do we have any other comments or ideas from the planning commission? Do you guys want to go through slide by slide? Or do you want to, are you comfortable with this? Do you want to just look through the slideshow in your own time?
I think it would help to just maybe pick the speaking roles. So everyone has a chance to prepare for what they're on the hook for.
Agreed.
It might be a little bit in flux because I think we've just decided to give some of those speaking roles to gateway engineers. But
We could all, I was just going to say, I don't know if everybody's available, maybe 10, 15 minutes beforehand, we can get on and say, okay, well, this is going to the engineer if that's the case.
I can certainly do that. Are we, are we all available to sign on about 15 minutes early next week?
Yeah, that way, or even if there's something in particular that you know for sure that was given out to somebody and is going out to the engineer, we could, I mean, we can always certainly read that in an email as well, if that's easier.
So do we want to go through and at least roughly allocate who's going to do which slide? Does somebody want to handle the introduction, the introductory slides? Welcome to us, overall agenda?
I, I'm not very knowledgeable on the content, but I'm always happy to talk and be MC. So if you want me to do intro and that sort of thing, I can, I can shepherd us or you guys can take another shot at it and go yourselves. Doesn't matter. But I'm happy to do it.
Good job as MC in, in past workshops. I'd be happy for him to be it again.
Eric?
So I'll take us through what slide four and it off.
So I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna put you on the agenda, the meet the team, meet the planning commission, goals and purposes. Do you want to do goals and purpose for the workshop as well?
I can tee that up and that's a good, you know, going into slide five, it's kind of a nice, comfortable handoff. Here's our goals and then on to, I would imagine Kirsten, you're going to start with slide five then. Would that be you?
Or would anybody else like to introduce the goals and purpose of the workshop?
Oh, yeah, yeah, whatever.
I can do that if that's easier.
It's not too lengthy, Colton, because I think after that,
I think the stormwater compliance has to be one of you two that have knowledge of this stuff, or maybe the engineer, right?
I think what I would do is I would, I would tee this one off and pass it to, and introduce the engineer and then pass it to them. So I would start it and then I would have them go into more detail with.
Yeah, because any of us would just read the green box.
Right.
Read themselves.
Great.
Kirsten, I just want to know, I kind of reworked some of the text in here. I had gone to the Alka-San website and looked at what the Crafton Boulevard Sewer Separation Project encompassed and listed the streets that they showed. But what I was confused about is the website listed Clearview twice and not Crafton Boulevard at all. So I took that to mean that it was a typo and Crafton Boulevard should be one of the listed streets instead of Clearview twice, if that makes sense. But I wanted somebody on the call to double check that or, or clarify if Coletta or Phil know offhand.
I would say that it, it was fully my intention to rely on Phil doing a check of these couple of slides after I filled them out. Um, I don't know if he's still on the line, but.
Phil, you've been voluntold.
But I, I'll verify that too. And then I, I will make sure that this gets, this gets sent to Phil for him to review and make sure that it looks, maybe I'll just send it to all of council. But those slides in particular, I want to check with, with someone with, with that detailed knowledge. It certainly does include Crafton. I think you're probably right that there was a typo or that it was an older version because there have been several rounds. So grow grants, so the, I'll probably shuffle this a little bit then to let the engineers talk a bit more about some of the details about the grow grant. But then what I wanted to do was share some examples of what other municipalities have done. Not from a very technically engineering heavy kind of language, but just more of a community language showing, showing and describing some of our neighboring communities. I know some of them have done curb bump outs, rain gardens, things like that. So I look for those and I will also present that slide once I put it together. Unless someone else really would like to take that on. The grant funding, does anyone want to talk about this? Um, so the first, this round here, um, I split this up just so that, because there's a lot that has happened and there have been multiple rounds of funding acquired. And so I thought to really help the community understand this, I wanted to present it in two phases. And in the middle here, show the that even begun. I know a lot of people have seen this sign out and they've seen the improvements at this intersection. And I wanted to use that as a, as a kind of a breaking point between talking about all the different funding sources, break it up in the middle and show, and talk a little bit about the impacts that are already being seen. Does anybody want to take that on?
I'll take those two.
Is that rich?
Yes. I'll take those two.
You want to talk about the grants as well? The budget sheets or just the?
Grants of what we've done, what's been done and what's going to be done. I know first, Kim, what happened to Soss Grand View.
This is one of those other slides I need to just double check on current status with council, but whether it's submitted or approved or what the, what the status is. But do you want to talk about this one as well? The, the next round of funding? Or do you?
Yeah, so as I say, I'll take both of those.
Okay.
Just let me know if it's changing on them or.
I'll put some notes in for you too, because again, I, I still need to figure out the exact details of those. So when I find, when I find out the status, I'll put those notes in for you.
Okay.
That looks like it's just copied. Um, this will just be a, a simple map showing on the aerial where the project applies. So Lydia had already found that information, this list in text of what streets it applies to. I wanted to put in the, the map on an aerial of what, what that looks like on a map. It'd be easier for people to understand specifically which blocks. And then there is.
That's something you're willing to put together with your, since you can annotate maps, are you able to?
I'll make the map for sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll do the map.
I can talk, I don't mind talking about it. I, I just don't have the capacity to make the map.
Yeah. So we'll put you as presenting that slide. And then do you want to also present the project information? We're talking about presentation of slides. That doesn't mean that I'm not still filling in slide content.
Just wanted to make sure, like I said, I had looked at this and tried to populate what I could, but I, I left things that I thought maybe were best suited to some software that you have.
As far as a project in intro info, is that something that maybe the gate, the engineer would be good to kind of delineate? Here's what it is.
Yeah, it might be a good point to have them speak up again.
Yes. Because, well, you know, I, I, I've heard tale and don't know detail about other things like, you know, what's the, what's the, the, this front of the school area going to be? And, you know, that sort of thing. I don't, I don't know how any of that impacts or is involved or whatever. So anything that, that I would say would be speculative because I, I don't know enough about the project. So it just seems like Gateway would be best suited. You know, we shouldn't be having to go out and do research on something that people have been paid to put together.
Yeah. Well, I think the, the role that, that our planning commissioners have though, that is valuable beyond what the engineers will have to bring is in presenting this in a user-friendly way to the community. Because, you know, the engineers, they, they're going to explain this with lots of technical language. And.
I would be happy to do a slide following that to be a reaction to the engineer, right? Kind of break it down into, in the Waffle House speak. Ask some pointed questions like I do about anything that may be technical in what they said.
Now, let's just let, let that happen organically. We don't, I don't think we need a separate slide. We can just hop in and ask questions.
In terms of a narrative order, you know, I can plan on speaking to the, you know, emceeing to the, to the engineer, if you will.
Okay. Um, I think that's a good approach. And this slide, I, I do want to fill it out with some, just like brief, easy to follow
Yep.
information, but we can have the gateway be the ones talking and giving more detail with, with that slide up.
That's great.
Um, so I'll put that slide together, but then Gateway will take the speaking role for a bit. Um, that image I have, I'll put it in.
You're going to speak to the image?
And maybe I'll, I'll take back over at this point and I'll present the old one and the new one. And talk a little bit about how it's evolved and changed. Um, the Crafton Boulevard parking lot, does anybody want to talk about this? Does anyone know much about this?
I was going to say, I don't know a ton about it, but if, if there's more information provided, I'd be glad to take it. Or if there's somewhere that we can get information from.
Put you down for this, Colton. For now, there is actually a number, a bunch of information. Lydia, I'm assuming you put this in. There's information in the notes below. We don't need to get into this in detail. So you can talk about it as much or as little as you like. But this, and I'll add more notes as well. This site is not part of the Crafton Boulevard project. Per se, but it is, it is a part of the overall thing. It's, the school is doing this parking lot that's across the street from the, um, from the school. They're constructing.
The elementary school.
The elementary school.
I don't know if they're doing it. I think that the parking lot is the reclamation to the, to the catch basins that are stored underneath it. Coletta has her hand up. She can, she can educate.
Yeah, Eric, you're, you're, you are correct. Basically, that is exactly it. Now, the school, the school board, and I don't, I don't think that, oh, Jim isn't still here. The school board will probably be putting some finishing touches.
Yeah.
Um, and some enhancements that are not included in what we've been able to have put in the grant.
But what's in the grant is pretty doggone comprehensive to have a.
Yes. Yeah. So basically, you're going to get, you know, the things are going to be put underneath and then the land will be reclaimed and paved. So the school board can use it as a, as a parking lot.
Coletta, do you know if that means the school won't be using the, what is a playground slash parking lot as a parking lot anymore?
I really don't know the answer to that. I don't know whether their plan, whether this is going to provide enough parking that they'll be able to change their usage. Uh, that would be something for the school, you know, for.
And Lydia, just so you know, pre-pandemic, the purpose and design of that parking lot was that it's only a parking lot during days where the known temperature is below the limit to permit outdoor recess. So that, that is the only time that that is scheduled to be a parking lot. Now with the pandemic, teachers are parking there. There's, there's a lot, obviously there's a sea change that's going on, you know, parent drop off is in the alley. There's, there's a lot, obviously there's a sea change that's going on. You know, parent drop off is in the alley and that has wreaked havoc on the community and the out front and all that, you know, that. So, but the, the, the design of it was, was meant to be, that's supposed to be a playground. But on days where they know the kids are outside, you know, and there's been times where Marcia's gone out and she's kicked some of them teachers out of there to move their cars when they parked there and when the, when the weather was borderline, the kids were going outside. This, this will, I think, I think this will eliminate that, but who's, who's it for us to say what school board policy will actually be?
Yeah, understood. I was just asking a question.
Yep.
Um, I think that brings up, that kind of brings us back to what's important about presenting this in this context. The, um, the point here isn't that we need to get into the details of how it's all working. We can, you know, we can talk about what's already here on the flyer, that there are going to be the retention basins underneath that are going to handle stormwater overflow and that this will be, you know, turned into a surface that can be used for parking by the school. But in kind of an overall planning con, context, what's important about this is for people to know that that site is going to be used for parking for the school. Is being, being improved so that it can be used for parking for the school. And so we can try to think about what that's going to mean for our traffic and how we can use this street redesign, this street reconstruction to improve traffic around the school. Talk about the issues that, that we've had with not having enough places to park, not having clear places to park, having a lot of unclear delineation and unclear space allocated for cars versus for the buses, having no, no crosswalks mid-block. And you have a lot of people who get dropped off on the opposite side of the street and have to walk across the street and there's no crosswalk. The parking is, people park haphazardly. The route, the road is wide enough for parking on the sides, but it's not actually delineated as parking. And so it's, there's just a lot of unclarity. And you can see that when people are dropping off their kids, which is why we allocate funding for our police officers to be out there watching usually two at a time. And we shouldn't have to have the police maintaining, you know, our street in front of the school should be safe enough for people to cross safely without needing a police escort. So this piece is important to also recognize because if there's parking across the street, then there's additional people crossing the street mid-block. Colton, I can type up some of that for you.
That's, I was gonna say, I don't need a briefing on that.
And I, I, you, you all know, and it says it in there about the 20th ward, but that whole section of houses, the homes across the street are not crafted. Like the whole glass candy shop, all that sort of stuff. That was all the tennis court. All of that was, was City of Pittsburgh.
Still is?
Well, yeah, still is.
Yeah.
Coletta's, Kirsten.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I was just gonna say, you know, as we're inviting the gateway and I don't know whether you want to see whether anyone from the school board wants to talk about what their plans are as you're trying to describe what could be possible with with regard to, you know, parking and, and traffic. They may not have thought it through yet, so it may not be beneficial, but I was just gonna say it might be worth reaching out to see if they've got anything they want to say about it.
I think that's a good idea.
I'll send them an email and see if someone's able to and interested in participating.
If not, I don't mind taking it, but that's, I think it's worth an email as well, at least for some additional context that we may not have.
Yeah.
It, it may be, you know, it, it may be things that we may need, you know, more, more school, school guards for the crossing or something. I don't know. It's an area I really don't know much about.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think anyone should be offended if the school board respectfully turns down the opportunity to speak just because there is a lot to unpack there in terms of their liability and what the crossing is going to look like and how they react to teacher policy. And, you know, it's, you gotta understand that the, the nightmare that they deal with, with the unions and the way that things go with, oh, I can park here, I can't park here, I get this, I don't get this. I, I, I don't know if they're going to be comfortable saying, hey, our vision is this, knowing that it could be impacted in a thousand legal ways. Unfortunately, that's just the, that's the burden that a school district in this day and age has to deal with. It's a shame.
Even if they don't speak, I think it, I'll, I'll still invite them and be great if they're there and they decide not to speak. Again, the, we don't need to focus on the details of what's happening with this project. It's more important to just get people to be aware of the fact that it is, we have traffic issues and as part of this project, there's going to be even more people crossing the street. And, and then next, as part of this project, we can think about how the street reconstruction can improve that.
And again, the, yeah, I could agree with you more Kirsten because the, the Waffle House interpretation of all of this stuff is people don't have, and no disrespect, people don't have a clue the difference between a planning commission, a council, borough council, a school board or anything else. It's them, right? What are they doing? And so they look at this as a representation of them and what are they doing? So the more we can, you know, and, and, and again, the Crafton School District may run the Crafton Elementary School, but the Crafton School is a feature of the Crafton Community. And it's one of our most important assets and most important features in this community. So it makes sense that we highlight and we help and that we support in that community development kind of a, kind of an aspect, but I don't know.
It's very possible that they haven't even thought about about pedestrian safety and getting people across the street. And I, I would like them to think about that. I would like everyone to think about that. I think we can, our community can, can expect and can work for, work towards streets that are easier to cross and children who can get to school without a police escort being required.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just telling you, in today's environment, as someone who's in the business of running schools, they are facing a mountain, a mountain of problems and crossing the street just right now, next year is, is not on. But I think it's a wonderful thing to bring to their attention. I really do.
So then we have all of these, you know, definitions and concepts that we wanted to share again, so people understand the ideas that we've been talking about and what value and what benefit they offer, you know, what they mean and what they bring to the community. Not just specifically for this project, which we're presenting as something that's currently happening, but also to keep people thinking about that these are things that we can continue looking to implement throughout our community. Lydia, you've been putting content in these. Do you want to take these slides?
Yeah, sure. I can take this.
I just got a comment, the stormwater separation image is, though disgusting, the most simplest and understandable image you can ask for. It's.
Yeah, I, I took that from the website. Does everyone think that that's an appropriate way to illustrate? I mean, stormwater, kind of a US term, but.
I think it's brilliant. Yes.
It's back to the whole point of, of separating sewers. I mean, there's, there's obviously stormwater management separate from, from decoupling storm sewers from sewers. But since this is kind of the point of the whole Crafton Boulevard sewer separation project, I, I was going to keep it kind of connected to that, that type of stormwater instead of talking too much about underground tanks and things like that.
I think the pictures are great. I think that for people like me that are visual learners and things of that nature, that that's going to be much more descriptive than, I mean, you could sit here and talk about it all day. So I think the pictures are definitely good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, those are good pictures.
One note I do want to make for everyone, we, we want to be careful when we're catching this project and the gate, the gateway will help with this. But we don't want to present it as this project is to reduce flooding explicitly because it's really, the whole consent order is more about water quality in the downstream rivers and streams that receive runoff and combined sewer overflows than it is about mitigating flooding, even though as a byproduct of separating sewers and storm drains, you do reduce flooding. So just, just.
We're gonna have, that, that slide is going to be, there's a placeholder for it, but that's going to be included right up front. So we talk about, we can talk about the various benefits, including reducing flooding, but we're gonna clearly talk about what the consent decree is and why, why we, we're doing this in the first place.
Thanks.
Yeah. And thank you for everything you started putting in. I, I got the bones together this weekend, but I'm not going to be able to fill in the, the rest of it until the next, this next weekend, so.
Yeah, no problem.
And then that, that gets us towards the end here. Let's see, no, there is actually a bit more. It was quite a bit more. Um, maybe these got moved around a little bit. So how can we create the changes we want to see? I don't want to assign that one yet because I think that might move. We don't want to focus too much on changes to this particular project. It's well underway. But we do want to come back to this at some point, and I, I think this one might be more appropriate later and talk about, you know, what has, what is happening here and where might we want to think about applying some of these streetscape improvements in the future? So not, you know, let, let that lead into Q and A and discussion, but not be focused on changes to this specific project.
Whoever speaks to this, I'll just say it so we can have a laugh about it. We shouldn't say that it's a death trap currently. It's a hell, you know, it's a, you know, it's, it's danger, you know, we shouldn't, we should just say improvements have been needed for some time. But the, the commentary of, we shouldn't make it a liability for, for the borough is what I'm saying.
Kirsten, can you just type in the bottom notes, improvements badly needed?
Yeah, I think that's a good way to say it.
Um, so this next section here gets into kind of an overview of the planning commission and what we are here for and what, what we can offer and what we're trying to help the community do. This, you know, we, we say often that no one really knows what the planning commission does. So this is our chance to remind them what we do and show them with this particular example, how, just how planning works. You know, this, this came up even earlier today. A lot of people have ideas and they don't know where to start. And we're not, planning commission isn't even always the place to start, but this is just a little bit of, you know, you, you start by identifying what it is that you want. We've got safety and walkability in our comp plan. We've been talking about it in the community. You enact policies that allow those improvements, that fund those improvements.
Can I challenge that, please? Enact, we recommend, right? Just, just so we don't, you know, we should get in our swim lane there because we don't enact anything. We make recommendations.
Will council enacts.
Oh, I thought you were saying the planet, this is the role of the planning commission.
This is not, no, this is not.
I'm sorry.
A specific, this is kind of, you know, how we as a community can get things done. And then we talk more about what our planning commission has been doing. And go back to recapping where a lot of these ideas started in the comprehensive plan. And the update to the comprehensive plan. And Lydia, I, I don't know if you have that document. I couldn't find it.
Are you talking about the progress report?
Yes.
That, I think you cover on the previous slide and that's on the website too.
Okay, well, I'll, I have, I have to look for that.
It's in the community page. It's, it's right with where the comprehensive plan is uploaded.
Okay.
And I think 27 goes away because 26 covers that progress report. And I, I'm happy to talk about 24 through 26. I don't know if you were planning to talk through 22 through 23, or whatever those were. Yeah, 22 and 23.
I can talk about these. So Lydia, you'll take through the master plan and then does somebody else want to present the vision document and then go over the, the workshops that were had and the conversations and input that came out of those?
I'm happy to if no one wants to.
Colton, I feel like you would be good at this. Do you want to present? Do an overview of what, what we did in August and, is it August and October?
Yeah, sorry. I was just reading that. But yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm good with that.
I think for some of our last, our previous workshops, we had these planning commission meetings the day before the workshop, right? And we had initially planned to have this workshop tomorrow as well. So for our previous workshops, we've often been assigning slides when the work, the slideshow is mostly done. This one is still a week away and it's, it's still got some missing pieces. So I see someone's put Eric in for that one.
Eric question mark, just because of the survey is hit in those and Eric was the most knowledgeable about the survey.
I think that might be Colton and then maybe another slide that goes into the survey and that would be Eric. Just because, I mean, they, they kind of go to, this is just an intro, right? And then this is talking about what, what came out of it. Recapping the workshop. And then I was hoping to get an, an image of the survey again. I, I set up the bones of this document, but I didn't have time to get, gather up all the images. So Eric, do you think you could get an image of your survey or save out a couple of your favorite images and put those in?
Yeah. Do you mean like an image of, like, sorry to say it this way, but like an image of the survey? Or like a screenshot? Like, what do you mean by an image?
You could do a screenshot or you could do some, you downloaded graphs, right, that showed who had responded to what question and what, what answers were.
Yeah, I can, I can do it. Whatever you guys want. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Whatever you think's going to look good. What, what do you want to share? We're gonna, you know, recap that a survey was out there. You probably want to put the link because it's, it's still live. And then whether you want to do a screenshot of what it looks like or share some of the results of what, what we've heard already.
I'll just make a little nifty about slide. Okay?
People like, people like to see something visual and not just text we have survey. And then this goes back to the, that vision document. We talked about all these different ideas. We talked about them then again in the workshops. And then this was given to council and then they gave it to the engineers. And some of these things are now put into a, a project that's, that's ongoing. So something that went from where we're doing our, our sewer, doing the sewer separation because we have to be compliant with new standards. We are now also getting additional community benefit out of it and rebuilding the street to encompass some of the things that, that people have been asking for, improving some of our walkability, improving, you know, unsafe intersections and putting in street trees and following a lot of those ideas that people have been, that have been, people have been talking about. So that's what these slides do from ideas to possibilities. I like that slide. I think Lydia added that one. And then this was what was in the vision workshop. And then this is the, the gateway current drawing. So really, that series is just, you know, showing how how all those community discussions that were held last year are starting to have, uh, you know, a real physical impact, showing that progression and showing people that this is what we can keep doing if we keep up these conversations. Does anybody want to take those or? Should I take those?
So wait, where was I stopping? I thought I thought
I think you're trying to volunteer, but you're on mute.
Colton, you had twenty eight and twenty nine and then thirty is going to be Eric.
I'll take those. I'll take
Okay, got it. So, okay, so I'm stopping with it where Eric starts. Okay, got it.
Yeah. Yeah. And then starting from thirty one, does anybody want to talk about these next ones?
Yes, that that's what I said. I didn't realize I was on mute. Says, I'll take this whole next set from thirty one down through, we will go to about thirty six. Thirty five. Thirty one to thirty five.
Okay. This um, this one here is the same one before. It's just blown up so you can see it better.
Yeah, okay, yes, it is. Okay.
Um, this will be so be more of the same. I was just gonna put a street view like a um, view of if you're standing in the street, just a like a picture of what you actually see as a person and then just put some labels on of where where each of these things go. I'll put you down tentatively for now, Rich. If you're, well, we can we can go over this real quick next week, too. And if anything needs to be reallocated, once it's all together. Um, and then these here gateway had also provided this close up of the intersection. This other intersection um and improvements to the Clearview Park Trail. Um, and I don't have much else to say about this. It's fairly straightforward and this wasn't in our previous workshops. But they um, they are showing some walkway improvements to this intersection. I can talk about this. I have to look into what actually we did here.
Yeah, or or ask anyway, too, if it makes sense.
What uh, what intersection is this?
Um, this is near Crotzer and like Josephine Street. If you go up Crafton Boulevard, there's just like a nice way to cut in to Clearview again. The the main, the main way to Clearview is um, near the start of the trolley trail with that bench. But then if you drive further, there's another way to cut into Clearview and all the streets back there.
Right, I got it. Yeah, I'm I'm near Josephine. I didn't realize that's what that was.
Yeah, it's that it's brick and it's really uneven and the road is kind of wide. It's like they're maybe narrowing it. That's Josephine over here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I know exactly where that's at now.
This is Doug. Uh, we we actually have, that's where, yes, that's where the city meets and the trail goes. We actually have that identified for a streetscape uh improvement coming up.
You mean an improvement beyond what they're showing here, something additional?
Oh, I I'm sorry. Let me get back here. I don't know what view I'm in. I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Is this whole corner?
Chop. Yes, this is called the pork chop right here. Yes. Um, so yes, you have the most recent rendition of this. I'm sorry.
So this is the only improvement that's being that's being considered, not something not something else to follow afterwards as well?
No, but we will be uh coordinating with the city to uh have a some sort of a, you know, transition between the two trails.
Okay, this area has been talked about a lot. It's not something we really um, addressed much in the previous workshops, but it was talked about as something to address coming up. Um, because there's a lot of unsafety in that area. So we can show people the the improvements in that area. Um, they'll probably want to see more. There's, there's just a lot of things happening there and then kind of a blind corner. Um, but then there's also been interest in continued improvements to the trail and improvements to the trail along the same lines as um, the improvements that the city of Pittsburgh is making. Um, and that's not what they're showing here, but I'm sure that that um people will want to ask about that and talk about what more can be done in the future. So if we open this up for Q and A, I would assume that those conversations will come up.
Well, what more would you like to see there?
Well, Pittsburgh is doing improvements to their side of the trolley trail. Um, ours is often muddy. It's not paved. It's not very well lit. It's not very well um not, not a lot of signage to or from it. There there've been a lot of conversations about making it a more durable trail that's usable for more more modes of mobility.
A specific example, uh, meeting for last, we talked about it. There's a small grant, couple of thousand dollars, small grant um, that we were kind of pushed away from pursuing. And I said, well, even if we just got mulch, it's doggone muddy on that thing. It's only usable certain days of the year. You know, even mulch, you know, alone press crushed gravel or something like that to improve uh, the trail surface itself. That's, you know, things like that. I think we had the last workshop. There was explicit feedback about someone who lives on Josephine who feels cut off from the town, right? They feel cut off because they're, they can't walk down on that road. And the trail is, you know, un-un-un navigable many days of the year, many days of the year because of the mud. So simple things.
And even even when it's not, it's definitely an unpaved, you know, woodland path, especially for portions of it that are that are much rougher than others. So it's good for a nice walk if you are up for that, but it's not as easy to do um, for all all users of different abilities and definitely in different weather conditions.
And and I apologize. This is the first time I'm attending a planning commission meeting.
Welcome.
So, uh, yes. And I wasn't supposed to say anything, but you know, now we're out of that and now we're into the meat and potatoes of of what you're trying to uh do here. So um, what is this presentation here, this workshop? Could you just explain it to me? But what what are, what are, what is this that we're trying to uh?
Kirsten, you should take that.
We have been holding these community workshops um at routine intervals over the past nine months or so because there were a lot of changes happening in the community, but not even big changes, but there were, there were changes that were coming up potentially. There were things that people were talking about that they wanted to see. We were um, there is the the school owned site that was discussed earlier um, in that, in that citizen presentation. Um, that site was being discussed by people all across the community. They knew that there were, there were plans out there to do something with it. Um, and there were a lot of people with thoughts and ideas and opinions and no clear understanding of how to go about sharing those. Um, in the meantime, we also have this comprehensive plan that was done a few years ago. Um, there's been, we've been going through this process to try to initiate a rezoning or a zoning update, rather. And uh, what we were finding last year is that there was not really great, clear um, understanding throughout the community and communication of what what things were happening. Um. And and how people could give their feedback and get involved. And we started this community workshop series um, to just get more information out and help be a portal for community input on some of these um, concepts, things that are are things that were coming across our planning commission agenda. We set up these workshops so that there was a more open forum for the community to learn about them outside of our planning commission meetings where we're we're all focusing on our agenda here. Um, okay. So just a format to get more information out and allow the community a clear way to to give their thoughts and ideas. This one here is the fourth in the series and it is focusing on the Crafton Boulevard Storm um sewer separation project. Um, it was put on our list of topics last summer. And by the time we're getting around to it now, it's already well under, well into the engineering phases, which is why we've been talking throughout this review of what we're going to be presenting as really presenting this one from more of an educational perspective and less of a, you know, interactive design session.
And I I, and I know we're, we're excited just because we're actually getting to do things because of this grant project. The streetscape. And uh, so yeah, we're very excited. So uh, thank you. Uh, and yes, that I just chimed in on this intersection because I know we're doing something, but um.
We run off on a tangent on the trail. That that's not part of this, but I anticipate if we show some improvements happening around that trailhead, people are gonna want to start talking about what comes next. What about the trail improvements?
And uh, and I think we're all, yeah, I think we're all for that. So yes, let's um, now that you're the new uh chairperson, um, let's have a, yeah, let's, let's talk and um, do this. So I'm I'm excited to see this happening from the planning commission. You guys are very proactive. That's good. Thank you.
We, we may, just a thought, we may want to group this with the parking lot and couch them as part of the project, but add-ons or something. It's like, i- it is part of the project, but it's not explicitly the storm sewer separation part and streetscaping associated with the part of the street that's getting separated. It's kind of like yeah, an add-on, just like the parking, the, the the school parking lot is. We just might want to group them in some way.
I think that let's see how it's all looking once all the content is in because I, it's still being developed.
Yeah.
Um, I can see the point in that, but also the, the parking lot is the relevance of that is really that it's, it's um going to involve increased traffic across that section. And increase pedestrian activity across that section, but it's, it's a separate user.
Right, but it's not connected to
It's not really something, sorry, I'm just gonna finish that thought. It's not really something that's connected to what was discussed in the past workshops, whereas this intersection was. Which is the only reason I wouldn't want to bury this early on. Um, you know, thi- this is something that we didn't really ask for, but it did kind of come out of the workshop.
Yeah. Even if we don't move it around, maybe we can just call them both additional pieces to the project that are not contiguous with the section of Crafton Boulevard that is being uh, this that the sewer is being replaced in.
We can certainly, yeah, figure out how to, how to
From those other photos, it looks like the section is Baldwin to Dinsmore.
It has various, and that's the drawing that they shared for their current phase, but it's got a longer it covers a bunch of different areas. I have to go back to where the original um, project extends where I have to dig that up. And then you, you had found the text for all the streets that were impacted. There are a number of streets that are impacted. It's not just that one stretch. Um.
Okay, so maybe I might be wrong if if it maybe the parking lot is adjacent to the part of the street that's getting separated?
I I believe that it goes all the way from here to the intersection with Noble. And I'm assuming I need to, I'm gonna ask actually if they have anything more they can share for next week, but I'm assuming they only provided this for now because that's the only piece that they have been working on in this phase. It it's by no means done. This might be their, their current focus, but it's going to go in and the construction of it will also happen in phases. We'll go all the way down to the end of the intersection with Noble. That last intersection past the school.
My, uh, just lack of knowledge on the extent of the project.
This is, I'm sorry, guys. This is what's difficult about reviewing this a whole week in advance when I haven't finished it yet. There are a lot of missing pieces still in here.
Well, should we get together next week for like twenty minutes?
We can't with the, with a quarrel without advertising, so we can do it mini groups for sure.
Should we all have a check in with Kirsten, schedule an appointment and get our, get our speaking assignments? Oh, my camera's not on. I'm typing away.
Guys, let's let's, um, I have I know what should be going into a lot of these. I just can only work on it on the weekend, so I will be putting a lot more in this weekend and I will email you guys all out. Um, and of course, anything anyone else wants to put in, I very much appreciate it, but um, I will work on this next weekend and fill in the pieces and email you guys when it's done. And then hopefully everyone takes a little time Sunday, Monday um, to review it and see if you're comfortable with what's in there and with which parts you're presenting. Um, and then and then we can talk again. I can talk to people individually or we can reallocate slides or we can just send some emails back and forth to get clarification. Um. I'm hoping that this will all be clear to all of you when it's closer to being complete. I think again, the these past workshops, we've met the day before and this is, this is eight days before.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great plan.
I wish that it were more done by now, but I only got those drawings from Gateway last week, so I only started this slideshow the weekend.
Yeah, don't take it as a criticism at all. It's, it was an honest question. I I just don't know enough about the project. Um, so I was assuming that some of these images were showing the extent, but this is probably just the extent of the street, streetscape that Gateway has passed along and the sewer portion goes much, you know, further.
I was hoping they would give me the image in front of the school, actually. And I don't know if they've prepared that. I know that's going to be one of the later pieces that's constructed. They're going to work their way down the hill. So I don't know if they've actually prepared that one yet. And Doug might be able to and
Yeah, we As we work together, I think we can make this uh uh, better for for both the council and the commission. Um, but yes, we do have a rendering of the parking lot. Um, and yes, this, this does go all the way down to the school for the sewer separation. So uh, yeah, I I think this is you guys are doing a great job here.
Well, Doug, I'm going to email you after this and ask for you to um give you a wishlist of anything else that you have that would be relevant and this like that parking lot drawing. I'm gonna put that down in an email and ask you if you can send that to me if you have it on hand.
Yes, we, yeah, perfect.
Do we, do you guys um, want to go over any of the rest of this now or are we comfortable for tonight that we have at least a a basic understanding of what is going to be in this and who's presenting what that's appropriate for a week in advance? We have some time to finish up and review and touch base next week.
Yes.
There's like three slides. Can we just tentatively put people in even if it switches for the last couple? I think I have three, thirty eight assigned, th- thirty six was Rich, thirty seven and eight was Kirsten.
We went through well, I think so thirty eight is me, so then thirty nine will be me because that's the same thing. Um, it's just gonna be a street view that lets people better understand that plan. Um, and then those last two slides, should we pass those back to Eric? You're the MC. Do you want to do the closing slides? You've done those for the past ones as well.
Yeah, abso- absolutely. Hey, what did I say? Does anyone remember how many responses we had to the survey last time we talked about it? It was like a hundred, right? It was like ninety five or It was like a hundred, right? It was like ninety five or was was that right?
Sounds, that sounds like it's in the ballpark, but I don't remember the number.
Double. We're at the hundred and ninety six now. Oh, good. Crazy. Yeah, I'll put I'll put some stuff in on that slide, but I like I said, I don't know anything about any of this stuff. You know, like you guys do anyway. So if there's something you want to assign to me over the weekend, you know what I mean? Text, call, throw a paper airplane, you know, whatever. Happy to help, but you know, I'll I'll look over it and I can speak to the last slides and all that sort of thing. Okay?
We'll have Gateway giving the giving the details, hopefully if they're able to participate and. Yeah, this is something that I've been pushing a lot, so I'm happy to talk a bit more if that's what if I'm talking more on this one, then. This is something I've been I've been for a long time. But we have we have slides allocated to everybody and. We've been doing a great job with these past workshops, so I'm sure this one's gonna gonna go off just fine too.
Don't go slacking now, Rich.
Let me just go back to our bring up our agenda again. Workshop number four, planning. So we've got through that. That was the last item on our agenda before citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? I'm just giving people a chance to unmute if they want. There we go.
We're still hanging out here. It's been a blast.
Made it through the long haul.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Exciting edge of my seat. Once again, thank you for everything. It's fantastic. It's like great to see like something happening. And you guys actively like working towards making Crafton awesome. So just like once again, to reiterate something that Eric said a while back was just kind of. We view our projects kind of, you know, adding to the whole marketing presence of Crafton, drawing people in. But once again, thanks a lot for everything, a lot of hard work, a lot of cool stuff kind of being tossed out there. It's great to see people active in. You know, kind of making this area awesome.
Yeah, and also during your meeting, we heard a lot about grants and stuff like that. We also think that. Our project or not ours, but our proposal can be pretty grant friendly. Especially if it's kind of commandeered by Crafton Borough, the way you guys were talking about grants. So potentially, maybe we can all work together and figure out a way to fund all this stuff and. Create a better community. We have a great community, I think, but make it that, keep it that way and even make it better. So we're here to help you guys and just let us know what we can do.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you guys for attending tonight.
We won't. We're not going away.
See, me every. We meet every month.
Yep, awesome.
Need every fourth Tuesday.
And feel free to call us if you'd like to.
Now, Lydia, I emailed you the proposal, so you you should have that. I gave you power to edit it, so. That 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 should allow you to be able to download it too and.
I'll probably just PDF it just. To keep keep it exactly how it was and. But but yes, thank you and I'll I'll work with Kirsten to make sure that gets to the school board and the school district and and council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I acknowledge you guys? Do do you understand who owns that property?
Uh, yes, so like how that that's like broken down?
Yeah.
So the the like the like bump out is still owned by Ingram, correct? And then.
No.
Or it's not owned, but it's.
It's in their territory.
The whole property is owned by the school board.
Correct.
Including the mini golf, but there's a rider that gives Crafton the ability to use in perpetuity. The mini golf area for borough purposes. The only way that Crafton can lose it is if the school needs it for school purposes or if Crafton. Deeds it back to the school district.
Correct.
At no point is this the Crafton municipality's property to sell.
We understand that.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, I just I just I don't wanna I don't wanna say because it's it's not really a proposal to us. You know what I mean? It's an organic proposal to the community at large. But yeah, I just I don't I don't want you guys thinking that we can, we can't do anything. Right?
We're we're very happy to see it. We very much appreciate. We will, we will. We will share the ideas that we heard from you, but yeah, we do have limited capacity to.
Oh, no, 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 we understand. We don't. We don't really have any kind of other vehicle. We thought that we we understood that you would be the best vehicle to at least, you know, get the get the idea going. We understand that the entire property is owned by the school board, that we have an agreement with the school board for that corner. And that we that we would need to. We would need to endorse a a a return letter or whatever you want to call it, is what we're. So we and we know that we are, we, you know, we also understand that there is some leverage on Crafton's side as far as zoning and other things. As well. So we are not at, we are not in a battle with the school board. We are in trying to say, okay, as you can see, we're thinking about the economics. We are also in, we're in a partnership here that is gonna be a win-win for everyone. So some of those trails, we'll call, we can call them, you know, we can call them cougar trails and put kids. Names up along the trails with graduation kids and things like that. So I mean, we're really. We just want it to be win-win. We know economics is a big part of it, but economics. You know, two years worth of economics doesn't make for a lifetime, so we're looking more at a lifetime worth of. Worth of income from it, so.
And that those ideas will be shared with with council and with the school board and that will. Get get them thinking too that there's another option out there and maybe they will. Find some inspiration in it.
Yeah, you got some sweat labor here, man. We're ready to roll.
All right, well, thank you so very much. I know we kept people for a long time tonight. We went through quite a lot of content. Big presentation and a presentation to prepare for. So should we motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned at nine fourteen.